Now called to order, roll call Mr. Shapiro.
All members are present.
Thank you, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quickly, before we get into our presentations, our, the current board has decided that at every meeting, at the beginning of the meeting, we are going to read the Carmel Clay Schools' mission statement. That statement is Carmel Clay Schools will provide opportunities for all students to realize their potential in an ever-changing world. Our first presentation this evening is "The Young Artist" with Ms. Rice.
Thank you.
With Ms. Dr. Dudley.
Mrs. Rice was not able to be here this evening, so I'm pitch hitting for her. But I'm very excited to be able to honor our young artists this evening. And before I do, you can see the wonderful work behind us that will be in our boardroom for the next six months, of our fabulous artists here in Carmel Clay Schools. And none of this could be possible without the support and dedication of our art teachers. So if you are one of our art teachers that is here this evening, if you could please stand to be recognized. And thank you so much for the support that you give to our students each and every day to really take that, their talent, and all of our students have talents in a lot of different ways, and to help to shape them. And you can see just the fine work that our students do. And this is just the two-dimensional art in our buildings. We have lots and lots of examples of great three-dimensional art as well. And it's just amazing to be able to see the work that they do. So students, when I call your name, if you'll come up and you'll get a certificate from Dr. Bearisford. And then if you'll come to the front of the dais here and stand there, and we'll get your picture when we are all finished. So we'll start with the high school. We have Gavin Zent, 10th grade student at Carmel High School. We have Ruoshi Ren, an 8th grade student at Carmel Middle. Sam Thomas, a 5th grade student at Cherry Tree Elementary. And you can stay up there. Yeah, go ahead and stay up there, and we'll take everybody's picture. Amelia Walker, a 2nd grade student at Clay Center Elementary. Otis Richardson, a 2nd grade student at Carmel Elementary. Olivia Meeker, a 7th grade student at Clay Middle School. Joey Manning, a 4th grade student at College Wood Elementary. Gashi Ho, an 8th grade student at Creekside Middle School. Brianna Serventes-Dimas, a 3rd grade student at Forestale. Holden Bonner, a 3rd grade student at Mohawk Trails. Michael Johnlich, a 4th grade student at Prairie Trace Elementary. Evelyn Adams, a 1st grade student at Smokey Row Elementary. Cameron Garen, a kindergarten student at Town Meadow. Lucy Yee, a 2nd grade student at West Clay Elementary. And Liddy Williams, a 3rd grade student at Woodbrook Elementary. And boys and girls, thank you so much for sharing your wonderful artwork. We very much appreciate that. And Mrs. Novus is going to take a picture. And then parents, you'll have the opportunity to take pictures as well. We'll have our students stay up here, and you'll have the opportunity to take their picture. Let's give one more hand for our great artists. Thank you so much. And you guys can go back and find your seats. Great job.
Up next, we will recognize the CCS 2025-2026 Armstrong Teacher/Educator of Indiana University, Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. It was my distinct pleasure to announce the selection of Mrs. Adrienne Chiba. If Mrs. Chiba could come on up here. So Mrs. Chiba has been selected as the 2025-2026 Armstrong Teacher of the Year for Indiana University School of Education. Mrs. Chiba, an instructional coach at Mohawk Trails Elementary School, was nominated by her principal, Dr. Jennifer Green, and selected by a committee of IU faculty and former award recipients. The Armstrong Teacher/Educator Award is an Indiana University program that recognizes and supports outstanding Indiana educators. The award provides financial support, opportunities for professional development, and a chance to collaborate with IU faculty and students. Approximately 10 to 12 teachers are selected each year. So we want to congratulate Mrs. Chiba for receiving this great honor. Congratulations. Oh, Mrs. Chiba, if you could come on up. And we also have one young artist that came, that she wants to come up and get her certificate. It's Brianna Serventes-Dimas from Forestale Elementary School.
Next, we will recognize the Carmel High School World Winter Guard State Champions, the Carmel High School Ambassador/Show Choir National Champions, and the Sandra and Alan Chapman 2025 Director Appreciation Award of Excellence, Mr. Kakey.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. And thank you for taking the time to recognize the accomplishments of some really special kids in our Performing Arts Department. We'll begin by recognizing our World Winter Guard, who won the IHSCGA State Championship. A World Class Winter Guard is one of four Winter Guards in Carmel Clay Schools, represents the highest performance level of those groups in World Class. The World Guard was named the 2025 Indiana High School Color Guard Association World Class State Champion at the state finals on March 22, and continued on to represent CHS at the Winter Guard International Finals, where they finished as the World Class runner-up nationally. Their 2025 production was titled "Hush", and was a beautiful blend of artistic and athletic choreography, set to a choral version of the famous children's book "Good Night Moon". We'd like to recognize each of the senior members of the World Guard tonight and congratulate them on both their state championship and their contributions to our color guard program over the last four years. So our seniors this year are Ava Adair, Sophie Breedlove, Karis Connolly, Ruth Dirksen, Lucy Eckelbarger, Jillian Johnson, Cassie Kelly, Brooke Newborn, Chloe Park, Ella Podney, Kat Robinson, Kennedy Sermon, E.V. Smith, Alexa Terry, C.C. Welch, and Kira Yesch. Our 2025 Carmel World Winter Garden. We don't need pictures of me with them. And next, we'd like to recognize the Ambassador/Show Choir for their national championship performance at the Show Choir Nationals, held on March 20 through the 22. The Ambassador's had a very successful competition season this year with their show "The Road to El Dorado", about a group of people on a search for the lost city of gold. They placed in the top two at every competition they attended, and took home several Best Vocal, Visual, and Show Design Caption Awards across their season. Their season culminated at the Show Choir Nationals, hosted on the stage at the Grand Old Opry in Nashville, Tennessee. Ten groups from all over the country, from Los Angeles to Connecticut, competed for the title. And the Ambassador's won that competition, along with the Best Vocal and Visual Captions, and unanimous first-place votes from the entire judging panel. We are very, very proud of all of these hard-working students. We've got three of those Ambassadors here tonight, representing the group for their student officers and their director, Kyle Barker, here. So representing our Ambassadors are Ellie Andrews, Luke Currie, and Sully Science. And finally, this evening, we would like to recognize another CHS Choir Director, Katie Coons, who was awarded and is the recipient of the Sandra and Alan Chapman 2025 Director of the Year Appreciation Award of Excellence, also awarded at the Show Choir Nationals. The Chapman Award, named for longtime Fort Madison Choral Directors, Alan and Sandra Chapman, is given annually at the Show Choir Nationals to an outstanding conductor, based on nominating letters from students, parents, communities, and colleagues. Congratulations to Mrs. Coons on this award. And I'd just like to thank all of you so very much, on behalf of the entire Performing Arts Department, for your recognition and support, not only of these groups, but for all of our ensembles, both at the high school and all over Carmel Clay Schools. I know that Dr. Bearisford's going to speak in a little bit about a few of our groups' more recent accomplishments at the end of the meeting tonight. I'd also like to thank everybody who attended the production of "Big Fish", the musical at the high school over the last weekend, another just resounding success for our kids. So thank you all very much this evening, and have a wonderful night.
Next, we will recognize the Stephen A. Backer, Carmel Clay Schools Teacher of the Year, Dr. O'Stryke.
Thank you very much. Good evening, President Koke, Dr. Bearisford, and members of the board. It's an honor for me tonight to introduce to you all this year's 2025 Carmel Clay Schools Teacher of the Year. Please come forward, from Carmel High School, BioMedical Teacher, Craig Harper. And instead of me talking about Craig and sharing all the phenomenal things about him as a teacher at Carmel High School, I'm going to let his students and his colleagues and people who are close to them share that with you this evening. Mrs. Novus.
Craig is one that always turns the attention to kids. And as calm as Craig is, you know, he makes the magic come to life in a classroom.
He really, his class is more like a conversation. He takes the time to talk to us and also understand what questions we have about the certain topics that he's teaching.
I like best that he covered a lot of topics that we don't usually see.
Craig is one that always turns the attention to kids. And as calm as Craig is, you know, he makes the magic come to life in a classroom.
He really, his class is more like a conversation. He takes the time to talk to us and also understand what questions we have about the certain topics that he's teaching.
I like best that he covered a lot of topics that we don't usually see in a lot of other classes. So it's not just like biology or chemistry. It's looking at the healthcare system itself.
He just has like a lot of energy, and he makes just like the class fun. Like, when we were like learning about pancreases, he would always like tell us to like think our pancreas, and just, he just makes it like really fun and interactive for everybody.
I find myself thinking about things he's told me about public health, or the healthcare system in general, from his class, even like three, four years later, whether it's stuff I see in the news or things I'm exposed to in my classes. And I think that's really testament to the care that he shows in his class and, you know, the value that he provides for students.
When Mr. Harper teaches, he's very calm, and he has a lot of humor to what he does. He makes you feel very comfortable, and the classroom's a very safe space with him.
Craig was also the first teacher to teach biomedical science at Carmel High School, and it has grown to become our most popular four-year career pathway.
He really checks in with you. Like, he checks in on how you're doing. All our tests are FRQs, so really, he gets them... It might sound crazy to a freshman that, oh, man, they're FRQs, so, oh, how am I going to do on the tests? But it really gauges like where you are, and he meets you where you are, and he takes you, and he builds you up.
When I walked into the class, he made everyone seem like that they were worthy enough and smart enough to do whatever they put their mind to.
Craig Harper is one of those teachers who goes above and beyond to get to know his students. He knows them academically, obviously, but he really gets to know them, their passions and their interests.
You know, before I went into his class, I was kind of thinking I would be a standard biology major. But after, you know, talking to him more and learning about what like different majors actually have to do, I'm honestly more interested in some of the stuff that we did in his class, like public health and the social determinants of health. That was like something in the like medical healthcare world aspect that I had just never learned about before I talked to him.
He helped me and motivated me to choose my decision to go to Purdue Honors College and major in neurobiology, so I can go down the pre-med track.
Another thing Craig does very well is he finds additional opportunities for students to bring their interests and passions forward to the community. So almost every SRT, he would invite a new person, or a surgeon, or some sort of, you know, industry leader, to come and talk to us. And that allowed us to network and build connections with these folks. And actually, I ended up shadowing one of the surgeons that he invited out. And it was just a great way for me to gain some insight into the medical industry and what it's like to be a surgeon.
We know that Craig's impact goes far beyond the walls at Carmel High School.
These past four years at Michigan, I've been super involved in public health and health policy, including getting to do some work at the American Public Health Association in DC. You got me interested in public health. And next year, I get to go to medical school at Harvard, and I credit that to you and all the other great teachers I've had.
I really appreciate you for teaching us how to think differently and to pursue our passions, which I can confidently say I translated over here to IU.
His passion and dedication for teaching have inspired so many, and they're one of the primary factors in me finding my passion for biomedical sciences.
Just his passion for teaching inspired me to volunteer at rural health clinics while I was in college and eventually pursue a career in medicine. So thank you so much, Mr. Harper.
You know, you came from a long line of educators with your mom and dad and your brother Stephen administration. But it really was more than that, even dating back to high school. Your attention to detail every single day shown through to me clearly. Your commitment to excellence on a daily basis, and most importantly, your unwavering support and loyalty to your team.
Remember that six-year-old first-grade student in my class, and I always knew that you were destined to do wonderful things. Thank you for your dedication to education.
He just keeps motivating us, and he's such a positive person to be around. And he's just a light in a room, and just spreads positivity wherever he goes.
We couldn't be happier for you, Harp. I'm proud of you. Hope things are going well and continue to go well, and we wish you all the best.
Congrats again.
Many congratulations, much love, and lots of warm fuzzies.
Craig, congratulations for getting Carmel Clay Schools Teacher of the Year.
So much better than I could have ever done. Congratulations, Mr. Harper. I do want to let the community know that Mr. Harper now moves to the state-level Teacher of the Year competition in the state of Indiana with the Indiana Department of Education. So he will represent Carmel Clay Schools moving on this summer. And we look forward to him progressing in that process as well. And this is an extra-special award because it's nominated by the community, by students, by peers, by parents, community members. We had over 500 nominations this year for our Teacher of the Year recommendations across all of our 15 schools. And Craig was our overall Teacher of the Year this year. And I do want to say one last special shout-out to the Carmel Education Foundation, who endows this award. And it is the Stephen A. Backer Teacher of the Year. Mr. Backer was a board president here in Carmel for many years, until unfortunately, he passed away due to cancer. And his wife has kept this award going in his name. So a special thank you to the Backer family, also to the Carmel Education Foundation, and a special congratulations to your Teacher of the Year, Mr. Craig Harper.
And parents and community members, you are more than welcome to stay for the entire meeting, but we will take a brief break if you wanted a picture with your artwork or to give you a chance to get home, since it's a school night. We will now move on to public comment. Per board bylaws, speakers will be placed in Group 1 and Group 2. Those in Group 1, which consists of CCS students, CCS parents, guardians, CCS employees, and Carmel residents, will be permitted to speak first, followed by participants in Group 2. As a reminder, participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface their comments by an announcement of their name and group affiliation. Comments may not reference specific corporation employees, patrons, or students. Comments shall be directed to the board. No person may address or question individual board members. The school board will not act on or respond to questions or comments made during public comment, but will take them under advisement. When your name is called, please go to the microphone and state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. There will be a timer right there on the podium, so you can gauge your time. And each of you, again, will have three minutes, and we thank you for participating. Let's get started. Up first, we have Keith Pittsley. And then second is David Sklar.
Pretty heavy book this, this, your book that you have in Carmel High School. But you've got a lot more students than I have. Okay. All right, well, first of all, my name's Keith Pittsley, and I've been a parent and a grandparent. But I have to tell you, my friend Karina Rosenthal showed up on time, and by the time she got to the head of the line, she ran out of time, and they wouldn't accept her presentation. I'd like to relinquish my position here as the first speaker and let Karina speak, because what she's speaking about is different than what I intend to speak about. So Karina, would you mind coming up? Here's your speech, and deliver it, please. Thank you.
Madam President, I think it's just a matter of order. That was out of order. We, it's unfortunate. I don't ever want to keep somebody from speaking, but I have a concern about enforcing the rules equally for all people. Is this something that is acceptable to the board? I've not seen this done before, so please help me understand.
Well, I can explain to the public this evening, the rules for signing up for public comment are to be by 5:45 PM, and then you sign...
up for public comment are to be, um, by 5:45 PM, and then you sign, um, up with one of the, one of the white cards, um, turned in, and again, then we put you in, uh, groups depending on where you live. Um, I'm open to the board input at this point.
Uh, did I understand that she was in line and the time ran out before the line was, um, exhausted, so to speak? I, I would think that, um, that they met the intent of being here on time, and she'd be given a chance to speak.
Yeah, that, uh, I don't have a problem with it, I just wanted to note that it, it was different. I mean, I, when I was a parent, I arrived here during COVID when we had capacity limitations. I got here 25 minutes before the meeting started, didn't even get in the room, let alone allowed to speak, so, uh, I understand the frustration, but, um, I would hope that we could do our best to treat everybody the same under our rules, so appreciate your, uh, entertaining my question.
Uh, thank you for the question. I, um, don't have the rules or the policy right in front of me, the bylaw in front of me to see about giving away time to someone else to speak, so, um, I'm, I'm honestly unsure of the answer, so at this point, I think we could just move, um, forward and allow it.
Can we restart the clock? Good evening. My name is Karina Rosenthal, and I speak tonight as a parent, a community advocate, and someone who believes deeply in the power of education, accountability, and community. The policy before you tonight is more than administrative update, it's a meaningful response. I spoke up because I witnessed something that was deeply wrong, alarming and hurtful anti-Semitic messaging displayed inside an elementary school with no oversight from administration. I couldn't walk by and do nothing. This proposed policy establishes important guardrails to ensure that family celebrations, like international festivals, remain joyful, meaningful, and respectful for all participants and community members. It sets clear expectations for displays, aligns content with anti-discrimination standards, and creates consistency across schools. And yet, despite these thoughtful improvements, I've heard troubling rumors that some schools may consider canceling international festivals altogether, not just because of the perceived burden of compliance, but also due to concerns about administrators needing to navigate complex global and political dynamics. I recognize that this may be challenging, but standing up for our kids and ensuring they are protected from harmful messages and displays while fostering genuine respect for all cultures is the kind of challenge worth taking on. I want to say as clearly as I can, please don't cancel these festivals. My family and I, along with thousands of other families, love international festivals. Our children look forward to them every single year. In a community that can sometimes feel like a bubble, these events are among the few opportunities for students to truly see, taste, hear, and experience cultures beyond their own. To suggest that these festivals might now be canceled because someone, particularly me, raised concerns about discriminatory content sends a deeply discouraging message. Is that really what we want to teach our kids? That raising your voice leads to something being taken away? That when following through on direction from leadership feels difficult, we simply choose not to? I never wanted these events to disappear. I wanted them to be safe, inclusive, and enriching for every child. So tonight, I want to thank the board for your work on this policy. I urge you to adopt it, and I ask our administrators and PTOs to see this not as a burden, but as an opportunity to do these festivals better, not to abandon them. Because when it comes to addressing antisemitism in our schools, we collectively as a community have much more to do, and even when it's hard, we must do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is David Sklar.
Thank you, uh, Madam President, members of the board. My name is David Sklar. I'm the Executive Director of the Jewish Community Relations Council. I want to thank you for the opportunity to quickly, uh, submit public comments on the policy 5261.01. Uh, as you can see tonight from the presence of Jewish community members, as well as previous, number of previous meetings, uh, this is an issue that is really at the heart of our community, uh, and of the utmost importance, and so we, we appreciate the board's attention to this matter, we appreciate the, uh, the communication and the outreach that we have been able to have with, uh, with Carmel Community Schools administrators and teachers on this issue, and we appreciate you, uh, bringing this board policy forward tonight for, uh, for your vote. I also want to thank members of my community for making their voices heard with the, with the board. Uh, I will just quickly follow up, uh, on Karina's comments, and thank you for, for letting her speak. Just, uh, just also to add my way to the, the rumors that we have heard about some questions and challenges for the implementation of this policy and the events going forward. This is, of course, not the intent that our community had for these events. It, it was just to provide some, some guidelines and, uh, for those events and some direction moving forward. We would, uh, of course, stand at the ready to, to make sure that we are helping the, uh, the board and the district implement this, this policy that is going to be voted on tonight to make sure that it, it's able to be utilized effectively, and as Karina said, uh, provides an opportunity and not a burden for, for, uh, Carmel Community Schools, uh, to implement. So I think that would raise a, a really serious concern among our community that we would somehow take the blame for these events that have been, uh, cherished in schools around the Carmel District, uh, take the blame for them being eliminated or canceled in the future. So we want to make sure that that does not happen. But again, thank you for your work on this, on this policy tonight. We appreciate your support, uh, tonight as it's voted on, and again, stand ready as a community to help you implement it in the future, and continue to address, uh, the, the serious issues, um, that, uh, we face not only here in Carmel schools, but in, in school districts, uh, across the state with growing antisemitism, um, being faced by, by our Jewish students. So, thank you.
Next on our agenda is consent, and tonight, the consent items include the Personnel Report, Claims, Payroll, and the Minutes from the April 15th Executive Session, April 15th Workshop Session, and the April 28th Regular Session School Board Meetings. As a reminder for the audience, the consent part of our meeting is our designated section where we group items together so we can consider and approve them in a single motion. So these are the business part of our meeting, again, that are payroll, consent, claims, and then Minutes for Meetings. Do I have a motion to approve the items listed on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jennifer. Any discussion? Okay, we will now vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Dr. Ostrich, I believe you had a few, um, comments regarding this consent agenda.
I do, thank, thank you very much. As we prepare for next school year and fill retirements, um, we have a few administrator announcements to make this evening that were just approved at, uh, with the consent agenda. The first, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Sarah Inskeep. Mrs. Inskeep brings over two decades of experience in public education, including 13 years of administrative leadership within Carmel Clay Schools. She currently serves as the Principal of Forest Dale Elementary School, where she was, has been known for her collaborative leadership style, her strong relationship building, and deep commitment to empowering both students and staff. Throughout her career, Mrs. Inskeep has led human, uh, capital efforts, including hiring, evaluation, professional development, and coaching of more than a hundred, uh, employees annually. Her people-centered, results-driven approach makes her a strong asset to assist leading the district's HR team as our next Director of Human Resources. Congratulations, Sarah Inskeep. Sarah, thank you for being here this evening, we appreciate it. Next, we are going to recognize our new Assistant Director of Special Services, Mrs. Rachel Neese. Mrs. Neese comes to us from Warren Township, where she currently serves as the Assistant Director of Exceptional Learners. In this role, she has led efforts to support special education programming across the district, provided professional development for staff, and helped ensure compliance and best practices in serving exceptional learners. Mrs. Neese brings a strong educational background to this position, earning her Director of Special Education license from Indiana University. She holds a Master's in Business Administration and Educational Leadership from the University of Indianapolis as a Woodrow Wilson Fellow, and has a dual Bachelor of Science degrees in Learning and Behavior Disorders and Elementary Education from Murray State. Please join me once again in welcoming Mrs. Rachel Neese to Carmel Clay Schools. And finally, this evening, it is my great pleasure to announce to you that Mr. Toby Steele will be serving as our next Director of Facilities for Carmel Clay Schools. Mr. Steele has been a dedicated member of CCS for nearly two decades. Since 2014, he has served as one of our Assistant Principals at Carmel High School, and prior to that, he was a highly respected social studies teacher and coach in our district. In his current role, Mr. Steele oversees daily operations for Carmel High School's expansive campus of over 1.3 million square feet, serving more than 5,000 students and hundreds of staff. He has led operational management and coordination for several major construction and renovation projects, including the Nautatorium, Greyhound Activity Center, the Performing Arts renovation in addition, the Polytechnic expansion, and most recently, our stadium and tennis facility, uh, renovations. Toby's strong leadership, exceptional organizational skills, and deep understanding of school operations and construction planning make him the ideal candidate to step into this district-wide role. He brings with him not only extensive experience, but also a collaborative mindset and a steadfast commitment to student safety, operational excellence, and student engagement. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Toby Steele on this well-deserved appointment as our next Director of Facilities.
Thank you, Dr. Ostrich. Excited to, to welcome all of them here, new roles and am very new to the district. Thank you for being here this evening. We will now move on to action items, and our first action item this evening is the authority to hire certified and non-certified staff and accept resignations from May 20th, 2024, through August 25th, 2025. Dr. Beresford.
Thank you. This is, uh, excuse me. Thank you. Uh, we come to you every year about this time to, uh, ask for the authority to, um, immediately hire and accept resignations, um, as we get into the, what we call the very fast and heavy, uh, hiring season, uh, speed is, it matters. So this enables, uh, myself and Dr. Ostrich to, uh, hire both certified and non-certified staff and accept resignations, um, through June, because at the end of June, I'm out of here, and so then we had to, to re-up and, uh, add Dr. Herrera, wave your hand back there, Dr. Herrera, and, uh, she's going to get, uh, that authority starting on July 1st, uh, when she becomes Assistant Superintendent, and then that'll carry all the way through the end of August. So, uh, uh, the purpose of this is just to accelerate the hiring process as it's pretty competitive at that time of the year. Thank you.
Can I clarify the dates? Should it be, um, May 20th, 2025? Okay. So again, the, the, what we are looking at today is May 20th, 2025, which is tomorrow, correct? Through August 25th, 2025. May, I have a motion to, um, for this item?
Madam President, I move that we grant Dr. Beresford and Dr. Ostrich the authority to hire both certified and non-certified staff and accept resignations from May 20th, 2025, through August 25th, 2025, and give the same authority to Dr. Ostrich and Dr. Herrera, July 1, 2025, through August 25th, 2025.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Our next action item is the materials adoption. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. Um, so last month at our board meeting, I brought to you a proposal for new materials that, um, will be used in our, um, new courses or our modified courses at Carmel High School, um, starting next year, and these materials were selected from, um, teachers, um, and administrators as they looked at the standards, looked at, um, how to support those courses, and then parents also had the opportunity to come and review these courses and give us any feedback as well.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. May I have a motion to approve the materials adoption?
I move to accept the materials adoption.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you, Greg. So the motion on the table is that we are voting to approve the materials adoption that Dr. Dudley just outlined. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we will all take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have several change orders, and I was going to see if I could have a motion to approve the change orders as a, as a group, and even though we are going to approve them as, potentially approve them as a group, Mr. McMichael will still share information on each separate item. The items are Item 5.3, Change Orders for Cherry Tree Elementary Renovations, Item 5.4, Change Orders Carmel High School Softball Complex, and Item 5.5, Change Orders Carmel High School Polytech Edition. May I have a motion to group those orders together?
I move to group Change Order 5.3 through 5.5 together as a group for voting purposes.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you, Greg. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we will take a vote, and again, what we are voting on is, we are grouping Items 5.3 through 5.5 on the agenda, putting them together as a group. If you are in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, now, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you.
Can you give us some information?
Yes, the first change order for Cherry Tree Elementary is, um, approximately $7,000, so it's a fairly insignificant cost for the project. It had to do with some, uh, minor but necessary modifications to some structural steel. Uh, the second change order is actually a net zero change order. It shows for $18,000, be- because one contractor did work that otherwise would have gone, so, uh, it will lower the other contract to offset that to zero. The third change order has to do with the Polytech project at the high school, and, um, it has a, a back charge in it as well, so the net for that is $45,000, and most of that project, or change order, has to do with some, uh, updating of some security standards that, uh, have, have, uh, were not there when, when this, uh, project was bid and awarded, so, uh, but those are necessary as well, of course.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I have a motion to approve Action Items 5.3 through 5.5? Thank you, Greg. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? And so again, the, the motion on the table right now is to approve Action Items 5.3 through 5.5. All right, seeing no discussion, we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next action item is the adoption of Policy 4540, the Schools and Government Agencies Policies. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. Um, so back in, um, after the executive order protecting American people against evasion that was issued on January 20th, 2025, our attorney suggested that we review our current policy, uh, 4540, and, um, the policy liaison and our attorneys, um, made those recommendations that you see, um, that was shared with you at our last meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. May I have a motion for this action item, and it's the adoption of Policy 4540?
I move to approve Policy Number 4540 on Schools and Government Agencies.
Thank you, Chris. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. And again, we are talking about action item, um, for the adoption of Policy 4540, the Schools and Government Agencies Policies. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next and last action item is the adoption of Policy 5261.01, Parent Involvement in Education. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. The Policy Liaison Committee reviewed Policy 5261.01, um, Parent Involvement in Education Policy, and, um, suggested changes to this policy as and suggested changes to this policy, as well as our administrative guidelines were also changed in accordance to this policy as well.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. May I have a motion for approval of this policy?
Madam Chair, I'd like to simply make a motion to amend the title of the policy, not the substance. I don't, I think parent involvement in education is a little bit misleading and would move to amend it to the title only to family celebrations, because I think that's mostly what the policy is about in substance.
Okay, so the motion that Ms. Wheeler is, has put on the table is to change the, only the title of Policy 5261.01 to change to Family Celebration. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Any discussion? Did you want to give more information on? Okay. Any other discussion on the change of title? Yeah, we're going to vote on the motion, the title change. Yes. Yep. We're voting on just the title change first, then we'll go back to the original one. Yes, you can discuss the title. Mm-hmm.
Does it need to be implied that these are family celebrations on school grounds? Or, or is that?
Well, if it wasn't on school grounds, we wouldn't have any authority over it. So, but happy.
Okay.
Any other discussion or comments on changing?
It's better than the original title, for sure. Okay.
So again, we're looking at, the motion that, that was given and then seconded was to change the title of Policy 5261.01 to say Family Celebrations. Celebrations?
I just would comment that I think it is a more accurate name of the scope of the policy. I mean, it's, we're not talking about all parental involvement at schools, like the other one would kind of imply. So I think it's, better identifies the narrow scope of the policy.
Okay, so we will then, now we're going to take a vote, and what we're voting on is Ms. Wheeler's motion to amend, to change the title of the policy. So what we are voting on right now is changing policy title 5261.01, changing the title to say Family Celebrations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So now we are looking at this policy as adoption of Policy 5261.01 with the title Family Celebrations. Do I have a motion for approval of this item?
I move to adopt Policy 5261, Family Celebrations.
May I have a second?
I second.
Thank you. So we are looking at adopting Policy 5261.01, Family Celebrations. Any discussion?
Couple of things. I know, I mentioned this was, there's a little email conversation, so I just want to reiterate something that we talked about. I had, we had gotten some feedback from the community after the first reading of this policy last month, to clarify some of the language that was in administrative guidelines that went with this policy. There was some, I thought, some excellent feedback, specific to how we speak about other cultures that may reside in other countries. The example that was given, if I'm remembering it correctly, was that if I were showing up at, if I was showing up at International Festival with my family and we were tabling on Israel, it would be accurate to be talking about Jewish people and Christian people and Arab, like, that would be accurate. So for me to only talk about Jewish people would be excluding other cultures that were there. And so the suggestion was made to tweak the language, and so Dr. Beresford shared with us some revised language in the administrative guidelines, so that we are being accepting of that, but we're basically not speaking negatively of other cultures. So we have made that adjustment in the administrative guidelines. So I think that's a really good change, so I want to thank the people who were sharing that feedback with the board. I would encourage people to continue to share feedback with us, because we're human, we're not going to catch everything or see everything. So that's number one. Secondly, I, I also want to make sure that our, our staff understand, certainly my opinion, that as a board, what we're not trying to do is place undue burden on anybody by, by anything that we're trying to do here. We certainly understand the amount of work that it takes to do the jobs that our principals and assistant principals do every single day. And so I believe that there are a number of different ways for this policy to be put into place, and the guidelines that are being proposed, that do not require a administrator to physically be the person that necessarily checks off certain boxes to fulfill the requirements as the guidelines are laid out. So I would hate for there to be unintended consequences, and so I think, should this policy be approved, and the guidelines that go along with it, it would be very useful, in my opinion, for everyone to take a breath and pause for a moment before anything else happens, and we make any decisions that potentially are unintended consequences. The last thing I would say for now, and then I'll certainly let anybody else speak, is, and I shared this at the last meeting, but I do think it really bears repeating, is that this addresses one piece of what I believe to be a larger conversation that I really hope that we can continue to have. And that is a larger issue that I believe is going on within our school district. That is not just about antisemitism, but certainly contains antisemitism that is going on within Carmel Clay Schools. But when these antisemitic events and incidences have taken place, we've also heard from other members of our community and other minority groups who are sharing other stories that are going on, which to me indicates that there is work that needs to happen. I don't know exactly what that solution is, but it indicates that there's a problem. And so I believe that it is important that this board hear from our administration that they have, they are making a commitment to take some tangible action steps to address these underlying issues in the very near future. And I think I will feel more comfortable to hear what that commitment is. That's all I have to say right now.
Well, you're very hard to go after, because you're very eloquent. Clearly, there is a problem that we must address, and as we take office, we dedicate ourselves to not following our own personal will all the time, but the will of our constituents. And I know that these events are near and dear to the people's hearts in our community, even though it is very difficult to create a policy that I feel will make sure that everyone is safe from ever experiencing these hateful acts again. But limiting them certainly can limit our children's exposure to other cultures and allow the diversity in our community to shine forth. And that is one of the shining lights of what Carmel has become. So I echo John's thoughts that we would continue to explore development opportunities for our teachers, our community, so that we can become better. The children in our community who espouse these ideals are hearing it from our media, from our elected officials, and maybe even in their own homes. And so I stand by the feeling that these are teaching opportunities where we can encourage our community to be bridge builders and an example for the rest of our state. Again, I don't know that this policy can address every problem that we're having, and we were only trying to fix this immediate problem as we explore other policies that we can change and implement within the whole selection of our policies. So we want everyone to be mindful of that. This is not the end of our work, this is only the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to express complete agreement with Mrs. Rosenthal and Mr. Scar's comments about the desire not to have this policy be a, a chilling effect on our family celebrations, in particular, international celebrations. And Mr. Pittsley, if, if you have anything you'd like to contribute, is he still here or did he leave? Oh, there you are. Sorry. Please feel free to contact us separately. Thank you for allowing your time to be shared. Definitely want to say personally, that was not my intention to end these types of family gatherings in schools. What my personal intention was, was to put a spotlight on it, to raise awareness, and hopefully to raise some cultural sensitivity. I think, you know, unfortunately, most of these things are pretty easy to see if you look and tell the difference between what is informational and educational, and what is hate speech, what is discriminatory, and what is harassment. I mean, so black and white, we shouldn't have needed to do this, but I'm very proud that we acted and also wanted to share the same feelings that have already been expressed. This was addressing a certain issue, but believe me, I know and others know that there are other opportunities to get better, there are other opportunities to, to address and, again, encourage everyone to share with us in a manner in which you are comfortable what your own experiences have been, and what your children's experiences have been in the community. Can't do it right now, ma'am, sorry. But if you want to share that information with us, you know, ccsboard@k12.in.us would be a great way to do it, and thank you.
I was just going to say, ccsboard@ccs.k12.
Sorry, it's the longest email.
I know, it is, it's, it is also on our website, but yes, ccsboard@ccs.k12.in.us. We do love hearing feedback from the community, so thank you for those who've reached out so far.
I just would like to add, just briefly, that we talked about this at the last meeting, where we were talking about the policy, that it is very limited, and I agree with you, it shouldn't really have to have policy for every single thing along these lines, because we already have about a 10-page policy on nondiscrimination and anti-harassment that deals, it's driven from federal law. So we have lots, lots of words here and things that we need to just implement, but I would say we're dealing with the culture of the school district, and I don't mean the culture of a particular people, because we have lots of peoples in our district. But I believe that what we're trying to achieve is an all-inclusive district, and I think, I agree with things I've heard tonight about these international festivals as being a great way to make that come about. I had an opportunity to attend one earlier this year, like, I don't know when it was, January or February, and it was wonderful. I mean, I sampled all kinds of food, saw about cultures, and it was, it was, it was great. And I think it's a unifying kind of an event, so I absolutely agree, I think we need to keep these things going. I will add this to what I've already heard, and I agree with everything I've heard, is that I think the culture of a district or any corporation is defined by what we tolerate and what we don't tolerate. And I think we just need to be very active in, in sending the message that when things happen, that we tolerate, we make that known, and if things happen that we don't tolerate, that we make that known too. So that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you, everybody, for your, for your discussion. I'm just going to briefly add, I do want to echo what several of you have said, as well as Mrs. Rosenthal, that these, the events are really great for our community. We get to see our neighbors and see everything, different places we've come from, because Carmel is so diverse, and that's what makes part of it great. It, it's, that's what I love about it, going to my own kids' international festival. So I think that is just something that, that we will continue to have to push as a board, you know, making, again, we, we, that was not something we wanted to happen either, either was to have unintended consequences. So we, as a board, are going to continue to work with the community and with the administration moving forward. I'm going to read the two parts of our guiding principles that I read at our last meeting, because these, we, these are sitting in front of us at every single meeting. Our mission statement that I read at the beginning of the meeting, as well as our guiding principles, so we have these to look at every single meeting. The first two are, "Students are at the center of every decision. A safe, non-threatening learning environment is essential." I, I witnessed each and every one of us looking at these every meeting. This is why we make these decisions we make, like the decision we're making tonight, the decisions we make every single meeting. We hold students in our hearts and our heads every time we're making a decision, so I want, I want everyone to know that, that that's always what we are thinking about, and it's important that we, that we keep being able to move forward with that in mind. All right, that was a great discussion. So now we're going to take a vote, and so I'm going to repeat the, the motion, since it's been a little bit. So we're moving to adopt Policy 5261.01, Family Celebrations. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have the Staff and Student Services Report. Dr. O'Stryke.
Good evening once again, and fresh off the press, we have our strategic plan focus group feedback that I'd like to share with you as we continue to develop our strategic plan here in Carmel Clay Schools. And so just a reminder on the timeline, we started this process back in September of 2024. Back in October through December, we developed and implemented our CCS Community Survey, presented those results to the board, I believe that was January. And for the past three to four months, I've been conducting listening sessions and focus groups across the community, and that's what I'm going to focus on this evening. In addition to that, this summer, I will be bringing a draft of our strategic plan to the board, more than likely in July, based upon community feedback, based upon research, based upon best practice, and our vision for what we want our schools to be here in Carmel. And then in August, we hope to bring it for a vote, and then we can move forward. Taking a look at the strategic plan groups that I met with, I met with 32 different community groups here in Carmel over the last three-plus months, in, and those were all in person. In those groups, we asked four open-ended questions that you see on the screen at this time, and as part of those, I want to thank the school board members for attending those as well. I know you attended some of our larger gatherings with our open community groups that we held, or with certain community groups, and so I appreciate the board's engagement as part of this process, I think that's fantastic. And of those 32 strategic plan focus groups and new superintendent listening sessions that I held and we held, that encompassed over 500 individuals. So if you take that and divide by 32, about 15 people in each, some more, some less, but 500 people, and that's in addition to the 4,500 responses we received on our community survey that I talked about, and then also the 61 employees that we did, with our, Dr. Herrera did, with our stay interviews, and so we engaged a large, a large amount of our community members as part of this process. And so some of the strategic plan focus group, as you can see, that we met with multiple CCS students, and if you saw the title screen there, those are three pictures with our students that I held groups with, parents, teachers, counselors, social workers, staff, and administrators. I've held, as I mentioned- I've held, as I mentioned, the two community-wide forums that were open to anybody in the community, and those were very well-attended. I met with the Carmel Education Foundation, the Dads Club, the Kiwanis, the Lions, the Rotary, the Greyhound Council, our CTA, which is the Carmel Teachers Association, as well as One Zone. And then in addition to that, I met with community faith leaders, I met with our community PAC groups in, here in Carmel, as well as our City of Carmel leaders. I do want to give a shout-out to Mayor Finkum, who was very engaged in this process as well, and our elected officials, and our city leaders that were a part of this process to provide feedback. So I'm grateful for everyone who lended their time in order to give feedback to our district. So I was at all 32, I read all 32 of the notes. So instead of the butcher paper that you see in a lot of groups that are really big, what we did is we had computers, and the people who are here for the bigger groups, they got to type in their responses into a Google form. And so I gathered all of that feedback in others, I personally typed the feedback in the smaller groups, and so not only was I there, I read all the feedback, gathered all the feedback, and I analyzed it myself, which I'll show you in a moment, but I also put it in AI to analyze it. So just to say, oh, Dr. O's not, you know, tilting all of this information, I wanted another source to take a look at it as well. And so here are the top three positive themes that were provided as part of those 500 individuals and 32 strategic planning focus groups. Number one was outstanding staff quality and care. Teachers, counselors, social workers, support staff widely praised as caring, committed, and responsive. Number two, strong acad, and these are in no particular order, by the way, strong academic and extracurricular offerings. The board saw a recent workshop on some of those offerings from our Polytechnic, but the academic pathways, AP, IB honors courses, clubs, extracurricular activities are valued at both the middle school and the high school levels. And then our commitment to student safety. So our SRO program came up time and time again, and I'll share some more with that later, but our safety drills, our secure facilities, and the strong safety culture are frequently highlighted as strength in the district. And then our top three areas of growth, as shared through the strategic planning focus groups. So communication and family engagement. So while some schools excel, others struggle with clarity and consistency, especially with our non-English speaking families. That was a theme across many of our strategic planning focus groups to ensure we're taking care of our multilingual learners and their families. Mental health and social emotional support. Continued investment in the mental health and training has been requested through this process, along with concerns about student stress, behaviors, emotional regulation, finals right now that students are taking place, and the stress that not only the students themselves, but their parents sometimes levy on our students, and I'm guilty of that myself as a father with a sophomore. And then also transportation and parking around Carmel High School. So I'll start with the parking. That was the A number one from our Carmel High School groups, student groups that I met with. I see Ben Oslander out there, and he was raising a fist to the number-one parking spot issue for Carmel High School. So that was, that was their number-one issue when I met with students at Carmel High School. And then also transportation. Many parents raised concerns, including our walk zones that we currently have, our lack of bus drivers that we continue to recruit, and then some double routes at the elementary level where we drop off a group of kids off the bus, and then we have to go back out and pick up a neighbor, a close-by neighborhood, and then drop them, drop our students off on a second route. So eliminating those at, in our district. So then what I did is I took all of my notes and put together some additional themes, and some you'll see are the similar, and some you'll see might be different, but communication was a theme across the majority of our strategic planning focus groups. And so they want us to proactively tell our story about Carmel Clay Schools, celebrating successes, acknowledging challenges, as we did this evening, and then transparently communicating key issues and initiatives across all grade levels to continue to build trust and understanding amongst our community, and especially those who don't have kids in Carmel. They may have had children in Carmel at one time, but they don't, they're not up-to-date on the things that we're doing as a district and those celebrations and challenges. So what can we do to engage the broader community as well? Financial transparency was a theme that came up, especially in some of our open community forums that we had, and looking to enhance knowledge of our, and understanding of school finance by developing clear, accessible tools and resources for our community, including some mentioned an online platform. What does that look like? How can we develop that? How can we maybe partner with the City of Carmel, not just on the financial piece, but on a lot of areas with my meetings with the mayor and with, with our city leaders? And then taking a look at communicating those budget structures and funding sources. Mr. McMichael does a nice job here at the board meetings, but, you know, how many people are watching the board meetings every week? And so how can we get that out broader to our community and taking a look at that? And then this was something I really heard across the themes was classified staff compensation and benefits and support. And so taking a look at a comprehensive review of our classified staff compensation and benefits to ensure that we're competitive, and we have alignment to the district's goals to attract support and retain high-quality support personnel. So that was a theme across many of the groups. And then this came up a bunch, and those of you who have children right now, those of you who are currently working, who utilized artificial intelligence or AI, we are just scratching the surface educationally, but also in the world. And so what can we do to integrate AI responsibly by equipping, first of all, our teachers with practical tools and training, but then introducing students to these foundational concepts, real-world applications? How can they, our students, utilize these tools to be successful? And then something for the board moving forward potentially, is ensuring that our policies are clear, ethical, secure, and effective. And so that might be something we look at as a board as well, under AI. And so that was a theme that came up quite a bit under technology use. And so finally, taking a look at student and school safety, time and time again, I heard about the safety referendum, and we cannot lose our Carmel police officers, our SROs that are in every single building, our elementaries, our middle schools, and our high school, and so wanting us to prioritize the renewal of the safety referendum so that we continue to have our safety measures to protect our students at every level. And I'm grateful for the elected officials that I met with at the, at, with the City of Carmel, that that was, that was a strong theme for them as well. Also, academic excellence came up time and time again. First of all, celebrating our academic excellence, but also ensuring that all students, all students achieve at high levels by taking a look at those evidence-based practices, monitoring progress, student outcomes, closing achievement gaps among student groups through differentiated supports and broad access to learning opportunities. And so those were the themes that, as I was in all 32 of these focus groups, that I took copious notes, read everything, was there that I saw. And so I want to remind us of the survey that we did, because we did administer that in December, presented on that in January, as I shared over 4,500 respondents, including our students at our middle schools and Carmel High School. And then I wanted to share the themes that I presented in January that came from the open-ended responses from the, the survey. And so as you can see, some consistency here with what I heard from the in-person strategic planning focus groups and engaging the community, a lot of support for our teachers and staff. They did, the sense of community was highlighted back in December and January, and then the high standards, high expectations that we have for academic achievements with our students. Areas for growth, focusing on those middle-range students, middle-level, ensuring adequate resources for our middle-achieving students. Also, student safety was seen as a positive, but also seen as an area of growth for us in the district. And in talking to our Director of Student Services and Safety, David Woodward, he says, "That's the sweet spot. We don't ever want to compromise on student safety, and we want to continue to get better." And then communication and transparency, which you saw is part of those focus groups, and especially, it says right in here, "Parents in the community and those without children." And so I think, first of all, I want to say thank you to all 500-plus people who came out, many of them were in this room right here, that provided feedback to all of us. I want to thank our school board. First of all, this opportunity, more than likely, is not possible without the transition with me as taking over the superintendency and having this year, because it takes a lot of nights and a lot of time to focus, to dedicate, and we're committed as a board and as an administration. And so with that, we will get this presentation posted on Board Docs right after the meeting, but with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions the board might have.
Dr. O, I just wanted to say thank you. This is really exciting for me, and not only to see all the feedback, but it was hard when you're a board member, because we, we didn't want to influence the feedback, so we monitored and watched, we didn't, you know, really participate, and so much of what you presented is what I heard in the couple of meetings that I participated in, as well as just in my talks with other parents. So I really think this is going to align well with future plans, and I'm excited to see the final work product, and thank you for your many, many hours of effort.
Thank you. I did want to say the most challenging part of hosting the, the listening sessions and the focus groups was I couldn't respond to every comment. I wanted to respond to every comment, share, yes, absolutely, that's what we're doing, and, no, that might not be accurate, but that's not the purpose. The purpose was to listen to our community, and I feel, I feel like we did that, so thank you.
Thanks, Dr. O. Looking forward to the full strategic plan. I, I think it's really neat, just from the conversations we've had as a board, to see some of the symmetry that lines up, A, from what the community has shared with you, some of the themes that you've pulled out of the community's feedback, and some of the things that the board has talked about as, as we are developing goals, and just that there's a lot of overlap. And so as we're sort of setting some measurable items of things that we want to work towards, and things how we're going to measure our success, where the community wants to go, just to see how all those puzzle pieces will fit together, it'll just be a really neat project. So looking forward to seeing where it all goes, so thank you for the work so far.
Yeah, I'll just add a comment. I think it's going to be an important reset to, to take a stop and stop in the road and look where we want to go, and opportunities, particularly for improvement. And I'm excited about it. We've been talking about board goals and how it all is going to align together, and I'm excited, looking forward to this fall when we get to implement it, and then next year when we get to track our progress and see where we can go. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. The only thing I was going to say is I think you, you have not seen the, the last of the board being part of community listening sessions. That is something that we are working on so that we can continue to listen to the community. This was not just a one-time thing for us, so that will, that will be forthcoming. Thank you, Dr. O'Stryke. Up next, we have the monthly financial update. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. So we're through four months out of the year, and so I'll begin by making comments on our education operating referendum, education fund. Oh, wait a minute. It went away. Hold on a minute.
I'll take the blame on that one. I may have logged out, everyone, so, on my presentation. Was it me?
Just a minute. I didn't practice for this, though. Now we got it. All right, almost there. Ta-da. All right, so I'll start with the education fund, the operating referendum, and the rainy day funds. As you know, we combined those by the end of April of this year. We, our ending cash balance is 10.9 million. You'll see on last year, it was 9.6. So we're about a million-two up, but there's three things I would point out. One is, is we have three, almost $3 million more that we put in the rainy day fund, so that, you have to account for that. Also, we held money back, as I made a comment, I believe, last month, that we held money back in the first year of the biennium so that we would have enough money to give a 1% raise in the second year. So we're doing that, so that's, that'll have a negative effect in terms of the balance will go back down a bit. And then the third piece, less significant, is most of this funding, or is, is, or at least the referendum funding is coming primarily from property tax, and as you know, we get that essentially twice a year. We'll start receiving it early in next month. But this year is, is, it grows over time with inflation and so forth, so, which means that if we were getting it every month, as we do the state support, then we would be receiving a little bit more, which means that has a negative effect on the cash as well. But then that will catch itself up in May and June. And so when you account for all of those, we're really tracking pretty close to where we were last year after making those adjustments. And then in our operations fund, we're showing a negative, because again, it's property tax that we haven't received yet, but we are still spending money. And so we're showing a negative balance of 1.7 million. Last year it was 5.3. The single largest thing is, is last year at this time, we had transferred $5 million into this fund from the education fund for those things that aren't permitted out of that fund anymore. And so that was a majority of it. When you take that into account, it brings it much closer. And then again, we, on the other hand, we, we held money back for the people paid out of that fund as well. So it's having the same, that's having the same impact as, as it did in the education fund. And then, and you can see here, you know, again, the, last year, we were, we were down, you know, almost $5 million, which again, that's typical, and because it's property tax, and so that'll catch itself up. So as you know, when we get to June 30th, the end of the fiscal year, that's, that's where we really take a close look at things. And again, the county year as well, but because the state funding now is coming on a fiscal year basis, June 30th balance has become more significant than, than December 31st, which is when it was all, all the funds included property tax. Okay, and then, as I said, the rainy day fund, we have 7.5 million in that fund, and last year it was about 3, 3 million less than that, and that's contributing to our slow but steady growth of our overall cash balance in those three, three major funds, which was a stated goal starting about three years ago. So we're, we're getting close to that 12% balance, where in years past, we, we would have a minimum of, that's minimum, not maximum, we would have, we would have a minimum of about 8%. So we've upped that minimum to 12, and, but it takes, it takes a while to get to that point. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Next, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Bearisford.
Thank you very much. Really, what a night, huh? We've got just fantastic, publics might be aware, but we had a board retreat, actually at advance, or at least a training. You don't like to retreat, you like to advance, and the board's working very hard on their board goals, and, and I appreciate that, and, and your efforts to get better. And then, and then we hear from Dr. O'Stryke. I told you he was going to blow it up, didn't I? Did I tell you he was, he was good? And, and that's a lot of work, 32 different venues of listening tours is a, is a long haul over a year, and, but look at the benefits that you're reaping out of all that hard work, so you take a nap sometime, but you got a little ways to go to get that job done. One of the cool things about Carmel Clay Schools is that, and it was here seven years ago when I started, there's just a ago when I started, there's just a part of the culture here to get better. And, you know, and we find out that we can do better when we work together. And, and that's really the only way it happens is when together we're better. And, and it's when we stop collaborating, stop working together, and we start, and divisiveness takes over is when really any organization, any community, and any school system is going to suffer. So one of the secret sauces of Carmel Clay Schools is that we do, we work together. And, and we may not align in, in different, a lot of different things, but when it comes to our kids, we're going to, we're going to lock arms, and we're going to work together and make sure our kids are taken care of at the highest level possible. And that is from the, the school board and all the way down to the, you know, the, to every, every person, every corner of the district. And most important, of course, being the teacher and the student in that classroom, and that moment of contact when those two get together. So anyhow, just proud of the, and it's really fun to see the, the progress being made and that the district's not going to, you know, they always ask, you know, are you, you know, are you coasting? And I said, no, we're not coasting because if to coast, you have to go downhill. And we're not going downhill. We're, we're going uphill. And we'll keep working and working to, to get to the highest level we possibly can. I did want you to know that tonight is my final school that I'm representing, and I am representing the Greyhounds of Carmel Clay High School. And the, I got the chief, the head dog back there. Dr. Ferris is in the back row. And, and I wanted to shout out to them, and because they're the administration, administrative team is what I call the big house. And, and the big house, I don't think I can do this much longer, sorry. The big house, you know, people ask me that question, how in the world do you operate a high school of over 5,200 kids that come every day? And you guys want to know? Because I'm going to tell you the list right now. It's because of Shade Watson, who is Assistant Principal and in charge of Student Services, and he, she works primarily in the Freshmen Center. It's because of Brittany Wiseman, who is Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. And she also operates 200 clubs and oversees that. It's because of Katie Overbeck, who was a Carmel Clay School Teacher of the Year just a few years ago, and now she's Assistant Principal in Charge of Student Services. And, and it's because of CJ Glander, Assistant Principal of Student Services, working at the, you know, the 1012 side. It's because of Valerie Peel, who is Assistant Principal of Curriculum Instruction, who corrected me from my report last time where I said we did over 4,000 AP IB exams. We actually did over 5,300 AP and IB exams, and those are all getting finished up right now. So it's because of Brad Seaver, Assistant Principal in Charge of Interventions. He's the guy that's been leading our charge in CTA, CTE, and our polytechnic programming. It's because of Amy Skeens-Benton, who is the Assistant Principal of Freshmen Center and Student Activities. She's going to be putting together a little party called Graduation on Thursday, and she is the ultimate party planner. And don't cross her, Ben, because she's very detailed about everything she does. But she, they're good because of Joe Schaller. He's Assistant Principal of Assessments and Scheduling and Staffing. That's, that's a business that goes on and on. You met Toby Steele, Assistant Principal of Operations and Finance. And then, of course, there's one more person to shout out to would be Christie Smith, who's our Coordinator of Special Services. Also, we have department chairs, and we just have a lot of really good, high-quality teachers and educators and IAs and, and just every, every corner of that building. It's all about having quality people working for our kids and with our kids and serving our kids. And then, of course, there is the Principal of Carmel High School, Dr. Tim Ferris back there. Let's give him a shout out and a. He's kind of the, he's kind of like the mayor of the city that never sleeps. You can go into Carmel High School at any time of the day, on any day of the week, and I am never alone. That place is on fire. That place is working every day. And, and so I couldn't be much, I just couldn't be prouder of the, of Carmel High School and the things that they've achieved. So I think it's a good segue to go right on into my report here. You met a lot of the, the talent that we have in the high school this, this evening, which was kind of nice. I didn't want to give you a report because I had done the preempt that the state music competitions were all going on. And once again, Win Symphony I won the ISMA State Concert Band Championship, the state championship, their seventh in a row. And I was really worried because this is my seventh year, and I wanted to run the table and just to be the superintendent of that great group. And they did. They won number seven in a row. Our symphony orchestra was the state runner-up orchestra. Our ambassadors, you met the three captains of that tonight, were the state mixed choir state runner-up. And then our Win Symphony II, and our concert band was, let me see, Win Symphony II was a concert band finalist. And then our Greyhound Sound was in the Univoice Choir state finalist. So what that means is out of the finals, which is a finite number of bands, and we had two of our choirs and two of our bands in the state finals, which is a pretty remarkable all by itself. And I wanted to do a special shout out because we have two people that are retiring this year that have made a lot of that music happen, national caliber people, and that would be Mike and Greta Pope. And Mike Pope has been the band director at Carmel High School for several, what did I say, decades, maybe? And, and his wife has been at, at the middle school level. And so the farm system is in place, and so it's, we're going, we've got some good people to step into those positions, but we're certainly going to miss the Potes. And we'll still see them around, I'm sure. And then finally, we saw tonight the Teacher of the Year for this district, Craig Harper. What a, what an inspiration to so many. So, so I thought I'm going to share all those things with you. Next to last, I wanted to share about a special invitation I got to go to the pups track meet. And, and I went there and they, you know, I got to watch all the elementary kids run and run and run and talk about, it's the first time I was, I used to be a track coach where I'd say, come on, get down, you know, you're doing this, you're great, you're going to make it, pump your arms. And the, and little kids will look at you and go, thank you so much. I'm like, why are you talking to me? You need to run. But they were cute. But they shared this with me, and this is the pup runners' thoughts on our coaches, our program, and what they've learned. And this is what, and I think this is pretty replicable of what teachers do and what coaches do. So it says, our coaches always cheer us on. Head up, shoulders down, keep your head high, and keep looking forward. They support you. They are really nice and helpful. They take the time out of their day just for us. They give us, they give everyone a fair chance. She's so nice. She brings so much passion to practices and puts so much confidence in us. I like it when they run with us and, and have us run with our arms to our sides to teach us how our arms are important to running, too. The games are so fun with new friends. He's cool and clear about instructions. I love pup running because I get my energy out and it gives me the opportunity to compete. They are positive and encouraging. I was so scared about the meets, but my coach told me that they're just a reward for the hard work. My favorite coach, my favorite is when coaches race us. They teach us really good drills. Trying my best is enough. I love our team. Our coaches are good at coaching, and they know what they're doing. I appreciate that they support us when we're upset. I made a friend, and we'll be together at Clay next year. So, you know, I think those coaches, they never know kind of what your impact is and what you make, but, but when you get the feedback and listen, it's pretty, pretty impressive. And my bell ringer, bell ringer for tonight. Boy, it was a tough one. So I have two. One is our, our school board was honored by the ISBA, and the Carmel Clay School Board of Trustees was recognized by the Indiana School Boards Association with an exemplary Governance Award for the calendar year 2024, highlighting their outstanding commitment to student success and ongoing professional learning. The EGA honors school boards at four levels of distinction based on points earned by board members participating in all kinds of different things. The quote was, "On behalf of the ISBA, we would like to commend this most exceptional group of school boards and board members. School boards perform a vital public service for their communities, and board members who actively participate in professional learning are better equipped to govern effectively and meet the needs of students." And in addition to the board level accolades, Carmel Clay School Board's president, Kristin Kokey, was individually recognized with a Level One Commendable Award for her personal commitment to professional development and effective governance. So congratulations to you, school board. Then my other one. How many of you guys went and saw The Big Fish? Was it amazing? It was absolutely amazing. Big Fish was the musical at Carmel High School. And if you ever want to go to Broadway, just skip the big ticket and get, pay your eight bucks at Carmel High School because it was amazing. And it was one of those musicals, which was, there was just so much going on all the time. I can't imagine what was going on behind the scenes because there were so many things happening in, in every angle as, as it went through the night. And the musical, of course, the, the quality of the music's incredible, and the story was just very, very touching. And actually, I'm not really an emotional kind of person, but I was getting a little choked up, and I got to thinking, I got to stop this because I'm not going to walk out of here when they turn the lights on, you know, being a snotty, crying mess here. But, but it was such a good show, and, and I just can't, can't say enough about the, you know, the, it takes an awful lot of work, an awful lot of people. And so from the stage production to the kids in the back, and the sound, and the lights, and all the effort that it takes to do that is, is just amazing. So anyhow, my bell ringer is the board and the fish. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple announcements before we end this evening. Believe it or not, in three days, May 22nd is the last day of school for students for this year, and it's also graduation. May 26th, all CCS offices will be closed for Memorial Day. Our next meeting is June 9th, and that's our workshop session. And then our next meeting after that is June 23rd for our regular session. June 19th, all CCS offices will be closed for the Juneteenth holiday. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
May I have a second? Thank you. Meeting adjourned.